Good evening, this is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its special November 20th meeting at 6:00 PM. Quorum for this meeting is three, and I will now call the following elected commissioners. Zone one Commissioner Jim Vigliotti.
Here.
Zone two Commissioner Dion Francis, who is absent tonight, we wish him well. Zone three Commissioner, myself, Harold Watson. Zone four Commissioner Deborah Lamberty, who is absent as of right now. And zone five Commissioner Len Petricelli.
Here.
Alternatives who may be in attendance include Linda Manos.
Here.
And Chris Selhavi. And we can't call you as a-
Yeah, as I say, just as a point of clarification, I'm no longer an alternate member, but participating as the incoming zoning Board of Appeals Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. We also welcome Jay Habansky, Planning and Zoning Administrator. Gail Lucilio is not here tonight, but our legal counsel Patricia Sullivan is. Tonight Linda Manos will be sitting in for Dion Francis, and currently, right now, we have no one to sit for Deborah Lamberty. We also, let's see, what else do I have here? Tonight, we welcome Robert Collins of SLR, who will be giving his presentation of where we stand on the zoning update. Publics free to listen, but may only speak at the invitation of the Chair during both administrative and public hearings. With that said, I call to order this monthly session of Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
I will now address the main item on our agenda, zoning update status, which will include facilitated by Robert Collins of SLR. Robert, you ready?
Yes. Go ahead. Yes.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Great.
Did you have anything, opening remarks or anything like that, Jay?
No, I've got no opening, other than I'll just remind the commission that at our last meeting, we determined that, you know, we're maybe on schedule with many of the tasks for the zoning regulations project update, and, you know, we wanted to have this meeting with you all to get your blessing on essentially some of the formatting, as well as the condensed format and maybe reorganization of our sections for the zoning regulations. I don't believe at this point, we have added or removed anything for the commission's consideration. This is really a reorganization of all of our sections, and if you, there are two documents, there's essentially the summary page, which looks like a table of contents, and then we have a backup spreadsheet. Both of these documents, Robert Collins has put together for all of us. The second document is essentially an outline of where the sections will be going, and where they came from, essentially in their current state, but to be their future location. So, just as a, that's just the quick overview, and I will turn it over to Robert to just kind of walk you all through. I don't think there's going to be a ton of discussion tonight unless you all have additional questions that we welcome, so with that, I'll turn it over to Robert.
Great, thank you, Jay. As always, it's a pleasure to be in front of everybody tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to review, especially on this Monday of a holiday week. I appreciate everybody taking the time to come out and be, take an interest in the updated zoning regulation project. As Jay mentioned, there's two main documents that are in front of you tonight, and I think the most important one for us, our purposes tonight, is just the one pager, you know, the document that looks like this, because this really summarizes it the most, and this is what we want to make sure that you feel comfortable with. Essentially, what we're here tonight, this is kind of a part two of when I was in front of you last time, which was in September, when I, when we presented the baseline review report, and solicited some feedback from you all to finalize that. In that baseline document, we gave some indication of how we were going to kind of reorganize the zoning regulations, because your code, current code, is kind of very unorganized, as you all are probably very well aware. Like currently, you have thirty-two different sections. For instance, the same exact, this document right here that I, that we presented to you tonight, is basically the same as this document here, which is the table of contents of the current zoning, because it only, it only cascades down one. It has these sections, and then the first of the subsections. And this document right now is actually, with thirty-two sections, is actually five pages long. So, we're hopeful that everybody can see, this one-page document is a lot more user-friendly, obviously. So, right from the start, we're kind of able to really help you, you know, get your code a lot more organized, and so that we can start doing the harder work of looking at the actual words within each section. Just to kind of run through on the one pager, just real quickly, an update of like what the five, are the seven main sections are going to be. Up first is the introduction section, which is a very typical initial section for a zoning code. We are capturing some of what you have, for the most part, and just repositioning it into the introduction, to kind of get things going. Section two will be the definitions and interpretation of terms, and terms not defined section. Then we will get right into the zoning districts. Zoning districts are going to be all consolidated into one section, and then they will be subdivided into subcategories. A residential district subcategory, an affordable housing district subcategory, the commercial district subcategory, industrial district subcategory, other districts, which you do have a few, and then overlay districts. So, right now, as you know, when you go through the code, those are kind of scattered throughout, and like, for instance, the affordable housing districts come at the very end, because you just recently adopted them into your code, and they were just placed at the very end. But we're now going to bring them up and actually put them in with the other districts. So, a user can go through the document pretty easily, say, "Oh, well, I have a commercial district," and go right to the commercial district section and look. That's going to be followed by then, the use table in section four, as well as the use-related standards. The use-related standards will include your special cases, right, as well as other explanation that might be needed for use, even if it's not a special case. That will, it will start with a use, consolidated use table, that we're going to be working on, and we will be sharing with you in the near future. We hope that the consolidated use table will be probably one of the single most greatest additions to the document, so that it will be very easy for somebody to look at all the various uses, and then where that, what districts those might be able to be used within. And then quickly jump to the various regulations that might be associated with those uses.
And I'll just quickly explain that that use table is essentially, if I were to call the zoning office as a mechanic, I would like to open up a mechanic's, a general repair, and I'm in a CA zone. Well, staff could just go to CA's, find in the column, general repair, or mechanic, move over to the column that says CA zone, and it would tell, direct either myself or staff, that requires an approval of motor vehicle location in a public hearing. So, it's essentially a quick chart that allows anyone to determine, as long as you know your zone and what the use is, you know what is, what the approval process is. Currently, it, our regulations will tell you, refer to section 3.2, which then bounces you to section 7.1, and it's very confusing. So, this will be an excellent tool for staff, as well as folks that are trying to interpret the regulations.
I assume that it will also affect the land boards positively, in terms of, I've seen ZBA, when they're trying to figure out if something comes within their-
Yeah, hopefully, it might relieve some of the frustration that folks feel when, you know, they're going through the process.
Yes, and good points, and we definitely have our work cut out for us to collapse what you have in your uses down to a use table, and we're up for the challenge. Actually, very excited about like putting the pieces of the puzzle together for that, because for instance, right now, I don't think you have a single use in your zoning code that is referred to by like just one word, you know, like just, like single family house. Every single use has like a sentence, a paragraph, or an entire section about it. So, we're really looking forward to working very carefully, making sure that the intent of all the uses are carried forward, but that we can modernize them and collapse them.
Do you want questions now, or do you want me to just keep writing little notes? Are you going to collapse the zoning map? Are we going to end up with less zoned areas, or is, are we essentially working with the zoning map as it exists right now?
So, I think currently, the intent is that all the zones are essentially, there aren't, I don't, we don't intend on creating new zones. I think there might be a possibility that a zone might be renamed, or so that it's clearer what it is. I mean, I think when most folks look at like a light industrial zone, it's not LI, as most other municipalities might label a light industrial zone, it's labeled MA. So, you know, we might, that might be presented to you all to make some recommendations about, yeah, it makes sense. Maybe we do make it a bit more legible for your average person trying to interpret these regulations.
Yeah, other than name changes and doing some other fine tuning, I know a couple of the overlays, we kind of have some of our work cut out for us, too. It would be a lot more complicated of a process if we were going to eliminate zoning districts or create new ones, because that would, you know, we, that would require a lot of notification and discussion with property owners over zoning category changes. So, for the most part, in this particular reorganization and modernization project, I think we want to, you know, stay, probably stay away from that, because I think it's, it makes sense, but there could be some groundwork that could be laid for maybe some districts that might be, you know, we might identify as, this might be a part two of like maybe reworking this one, or eliminating it, or something like that in the future. I think we have a really good base to start with, though. Okay, so just, and we can certainly take questions throughout, as well as at the end, since we don't have too much to go through. Section five, the next section, is kind of a unique section to Stratford. It's not completely out of the norm, but you, you all do have some very specific development types that are discussed within your zoning code. Some places, this might fall in under just another kind of use regulation, so that's why it kind of follows four, but there, there are use standards or development types that you have in your code now, that are for pretty big type of categories. In other words, as you can see, there's a discussion in your code currently about affordable housing developments, apartments, older adult housing communities, and these types of uses are more, they're not zoning districts, but they're kind of like use-related plus. And so, that's why we kind of pulled them together, we combined them, and we felt that in talking with staff, that it would warrant being in its own section immediately following use. And it would also be right before the site development standards, which is what section six is, and site development standards and regulations, these are types of regulations that anybody would potentially need to utilize, once they know their zone, they know what their zoning district is, they know what their uses are, but now they want to develop something on their property. They might want to put up a fence, or they might want to develop a vacant parcel. And going to section six will allow folks, and there will be, there will be a reference to these, this particular section in each district, especially when they really apply to redevelopment, or development of a parcel. You know, you might need to look at earth removal and fill, because you're going to be putting in a new gas station, or you might want to know what the sign code regulations are for your property. Parking and loading, those types of things end up being what we call site development standards, and they're all being collapsed into section six. I think that in section six, when we get into this section in more detail, we know in talking with staff, this will probably be expanded. We probably will put more linkages in to other sections of the town code that are not under zoning, but have come into play, for instance, like the floodplain regulations. So, we will probably make sure that while we may not physically move them over, we'll make sure that they're mentioned and referenced, so there's a lot of cross-referencing.
So, like our resiliency, our coming resiliency regulations-
Right.
-will stay within the resiliency, but they'll be referred to-
There should be a linkage there, even if we have to have a section, but then that section just says, "Refer to this other part of the town code."
And I assume that includes the coastal state regulations?
There is, the coastal area management regulations are already in the zoning regulations, so those will be moved here, but if there are other sections of the town code, we want to make sure that we'll be referring to them. And I know that Dan and Jay have a good handle on some of those sections that we're going to want to make sure that we're going to be linking.
And a good example of that would be some of the airport zoning regulations. The zoning board, the zoning regulations say that, and the town code, so there are two different codes we're talking about, are zoning regulations in our town code. Town code said zoning Board of Appeals makes decisions at the airport, but the regulations themselves are in the town code. How that was set up that way, we're not sure, but it makes it somewhat challenging for the town to juggle, so, you know, we'll be looking at a way to, when someone lands on the airport zoning regulations, to get them to the right development standards, you need X amount of trees, you need, can only do X amount of paint, whatever it happens to be. So, we're getting people to the right place efficiency, efficiently.
And there could be some, some, you know, as we talked about in our baseline review, there may be some new sections that might get added, for instance, about like landscaping, which there may be, there's not very much information elsewhere in the town's code, so therefore, that might be a new section that we might suggest gets added with some basic regulations.
That was kind of one of my questions, it's, so conservation would get, is something that we'd think seriously about adding in here. Conservation, native planting and all of that would end up having a section in here that might apply to-
And so, we, potentially, yes, and those are some of the proposals that we'll put in front of you all to make those decisions about what you feel is appropriate, and we'll give our best advice of, you know, in this section, you know, we can mention generally native species, and direct consultation with the conservation superintendent, to make sure that the right plantings are happening, or maybe lighting is another section that we might want to include, because we don't have that. I had an hour-long meeting today with a resident about proposed lighting regulations, and I was given a, you know, a thirty-page lighting document, that I'm not quite sure is Stratford-centric. I mean, it's great ideas, but we were able to, after working with the, after working with the resident for an hour, we were able to boil it down to, you know, three real key standards that they felt were most important, from this great regulation on the other side of the country, that we can make more usable here in Stratford. You know, part of the discussion that we had was, this other municipality with this thirty-five-page lighting regulation, had twenty-six staff. I have, we have one, we have one person doing it. So, there's what we really want to do, and there's what we, you know, can do. And so, that's, that's some of the advice that we're going to give you all as you're making these decisions. We can have the greatest regulation ever, but if we are unable to enforce it, how good could it be? And that's part of the discussion that we'll be having as we, as we work through these.
Okay, and then, sure.
But we're not going to just do regulations based upon staffing, right? I mean, you're not going to say, "I only have one person, so we can't do this, we can't do that."
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, you're just saying you only have one person, and you don't want to have zoning regulations that you can't enforce, because you only have one person. But is that really the right way to go?
Well, that's up for you all as elected officials to determine. That's your job.
But we can't hire people, though.
But it's your job to determine whether or not that's right. We're going to advise you, but you all make the decision, not me.
Yep, very, very good questions. It's a balance. Finally, the last section of the, of the new reorganization is going to be section seven, which is going to be the administration procedures and enforcement section. This section is going to be, is pulling from many of the existing sections in the code, but we will be working very closely with town staff to make sure that we get some of the administrative policies and procedures that may not be very clear or written down, that we kind of put it into a much more user-friendly format, not only with words, but probably also like a process table and things like that, which would be similar to, you know, putting in like the use table, so it's user-friendly, we'll want to have like an application-type user table as well. Did you have a question?
I, well, a comment, really. From having been on planning and now on zoning, I look at the list that we get from our staff of what we should consider. So, I would like to, if there's any way you can go back and review any of those, maybe Jay can pull you some, because there's a consistency in what we're doing every single project that comes before us. Certain things that, you know, the landscaping, the lighting, the, all of these kind of things, which, it's a lot for Jay to type up on every single project, and it actually becomes, I don't know how to say it nicely, a bully list in a way. It's part of our hammer when we're negotiating with whoever's coming in with a project, but I think that a lot of it is in our current regulations, it's lost in the regulations. We depend upon Jay to pull it out and say, "Remember this, look at this, think about this." And I just hope that in these new regulations, that those linkages are made clear. I'll just make, we talked about conservation. We've talked, we've had projects come before us that are adaptations, but we don't really have any zoning that supports adaptations. So, that would be something that would be new, correct? If we would think of something like that?
So, what type of adaptations are you, are you talking about?
Oh, the paper factory on Broad Street that people keep saying should be turned into artist housing.
Gotcha, so-
The place on Ferry Boulevard that we should, that we should have loft space, you know, those kind of projects that we keep talking about being very important, and the new P O C D puts places emphasis on it, but I don't think we have a line of zoning that would support anybody putting together a project to bring to us.
So, so we do, and it was an amendment, and there's, it's one line. You can convert former hotels of X amount of stories into apartments, and that was for the old Ramada. But that's really the only, and we, we call, what you're referring to is adaptation, planners refer to it as adaptive reuse of a property.
That's the phrase I meant.
I think it certainly, it's certainly worthy of a discussion, how we want to facilitate the redevelopment of former sites.
Well, the, one of the reasons we have such a well-developed special development type is because we have no buildable land, really. So, every time that we have a project, it's either something has to be torn down, or a brownfield has to be utilized, or, you know, we really are constrained in our suburban, urban little city here, that, I just think that if we're doing this, that, forward-looking, if there's anything we can do to address some of these issues, that we're only going to get, you know, just like ADU, when I first came on, we didn't have an ADU at all. I don't remember anybody asking for one, but within the last two years, we've had close to two dozen, I would venture by now. So, I won't stop, go ahead.
You know, those are all good points, and that's actually built into the process. You know, you know, just to kind of explain that a little bit, now that I went through the, the basic outline, is that, you know, we are going to work closely with staff on each, we're going to break each one of these sections and look at them individually, so there's going to be like seven different sections, you know, we're going to review them individually, and then at the end, put them all back together. Probably introduction, and at least one in seven, you know, we will probably, most likely, work very closely with staff on that, especially with seven, because we know what they, we want to get them with their experience kind of nailed down. We'll give them a lot of guidance, we'll ask questions, and we'll kind of work back and forth on that. Definitions, you know, that's going to, which is section two, that will kind of come, that's a very logical one, where we're just going to pull all the definitions, and we'll kind of share that again with you in like a consolidated at the end. Really, over the course of the next couple of months, we're going to look very carefully at the zone, at section three, the uses, section four, and then section six, the site development standards, and like several of them. What I imagine is, is how we will proceed with them, is that we will have review meetings as we go through the sections with staff. And then when we get to these bigger sections, we'll kind of identify what the, you know, what we need to talk about with you, and we'll probably have like a workshop, where we'll just talk about section three, the zoning districts, you know? We'll share with you our consolidated viewpoint, and like a first draft of it, and then we'll get, want to get your feedback. In the site development standard section, what we'll want to do is talk about the like new sections that we want to potentially add, or new areas that we want to add, based on like what you just brought up, a couple of them, like conservation and adaptive reuse. We usually, and we've obviously gone through, and we've identified some of them already in the baseline review, where we talked about some of the new subjects. The P O C D is also, you know, feeding them to us. How we usually want to talk with you about new subjects is that we, we do something called a one-pager document, and we have a series of different subjects that are new current planning trends, that are worth considering, based on what the P O C D said, or what we've talked about. We do what we call, the reason why we call it a one-pager is because we try to give you, as zoning commissioners, a snapshot of what that is, you know, like with a brief discussion of like, what is the subject, how is your code already looking at this subject potentially, and what are some things that we can do now to amend the code while we're doing this reorganization, to put more focus on that. And then we'll have, we'll have discussions with you about those, to get the feedback so we know how to filter those things into the final version.
So, Robert, would that include like, in terms of resiliency, retreat and adapt? Would those kind of, would any of that information come in here, or is that still a planning?
Well, I mean, it could.
Or is it too soon to expect that to come up in any of our regulations?
I mean, that will be something that you all will have to guide me, or if that's something that the community's already talking about. I was thinking more along the lines that we would probably have some that we know we need to put in the code now, like things like around green infrastructure, green technology-
Blood zone.
-adaptive reuse, lighting, you know, some form of lighting, you know, maybe looking at, I mean, TOD is something that a lot of other communities are looking to add, but you already have a TOD district, but maybe we can fine tune it, the-
Well, our, our hope is, any committee that I've been on, is that we will expand our TOD.
Right.
That eventually, it will take up Barnum, Barnum will be part of our TOD.
Just like, yep, potentially, and that's what we're going to be talking about and working with you to potentially put that discussion, you know, pull out what's in the TOD, even the design guidelines, for instance, because we've talked to Jay about this, where maybe the design guidelines that are within the TOD, maybe they start getting tweaked a little bit, but maybe they're included in some of the other districts, like the commercial districts, where they have to reference them, or use them as a guide, or something like that. So, there's a lot, and, you know, affordable housing is another one, where, you know, the town has taken a pretty, a nice lead in the area for some of the affordable housing, but we know that it can be furthered, it can be taken further, and the P O C D did give some guidelines for that, but we'll have a one-pager on that, about like what you're doing now, and what we could do to further expand that.
Currently, we, we just did an affordable housing unit, that the developer wanted to use his own, his own employee to manage it, and we said very clearly, Stratford doesn't allow you to do that, you've got to go through the state list and find a professional to do it. Should that end up going into our zoning? Go ahead. So, those are the kind of things, Jay, that you, I assume you'll be sitting down, saying, "We've got to include this, and this, and this."
And that goes back to what you were mentioning about, you know, your standard conditions of approval that you attach to almost every project, that would apply towards an affordable housing project, or a workforce housing project, correct?
That's what I was going to bring up, the workforce housing. Are we going to somehow include that in the reg, I mean, the governor's pushing that, right, $800 million he's putting for it? Are we somehow going to include that in our regulations?
So, I think that's going to be something that'll be presented to you all. You know, I had a meeting with a developer last week, who's interested in taking advantage of the $800 million that have been set up through the state, and it's essentially provides $125,000 of subsidies per unit. So, it doesn't take a lot to do the math, that money's going to go quickly. And if it does, and it's successful, maybe another round gets funded, so, you know, I think what Robert and I will be tasked to do is to kind of figure out what the landscape looks like. If we were to propose a regulation, what are we trying to achieve? What's the- What's the intent? So we'll get, and this is kind of how I envision it being presented to you. We put together maybe a, a bit of intent, ways to allow folks to apply for workforce housing, as opposed to eight dash thirty G. And under that scenario, maybe one hundred of the units are, we are getting credit for a hundred percent of the, of these units that are being developed. Getting us to that ten percent housing stock of being affordable much quicker. And so we'll present the intent, the mechanics of how to do it, why, and then you all can say, "Yeah, we really like this, let's get this in section seven, or section six, wherever it happens to be." My guess is that it actually replaces section five point one, which was our stab at affordable housing, you know, twenty years ago, that not one person has ever made an application under it. It's just, there's not enough incentive there for someone to do it. But now with this eight hundred million dollars that's available for workforce housing, maybe we, maybe we swap that out for, for something more up, up-to-date, more, with more incentive.
I think another important point to remember, too, is that the zoning regulations aren't the only tool that the town has for these pretty big, major points, like affordable housing. We want to make sure that the zoning code removes any barriers, or restrictions, or somehow promotes it more, you know, and that, but it's based, going to be based on what the zoning commission is comfortable with. And that's why, just the simple reorganizing and putting things more, so that they're more clear and more concise. I mean, you'll be surprised at just the use table, and having those uses be more clear, and maybe having, you know, descriptions in the use regulations, that will make it easier for, you know, homeowners to understand that they can do a A D U, or, you know, a real estate developer that may be wanting to redevelop a vacant site. I think what their potential, what they could have, what the potentials of that site are, are going to be much easier to understand just by the reorganization of the code. And I think on those different subjects, we'll, we'll make sure that we're talking about them to their fullest, that the commission is comfortable with, but that we're removing any barriers that maybe the current structure of the code might be hindering people from understanding those types of things. And then making sure that the linkages to other town regulations, or policies, and things like that are in there, that might also benefit those particular subjects.
And, and I know I mentioned this, this at our last meeting, we're, there are going to be priorities from this commission that don't fall within the scope of this project. It's just too large, or too heavy of a lift, it'll bog down what it is we're trying to do. But, so we've got, we're going to be working on maintaining a running list of, hey, you know, we can't create a design district for Paradise Green. Figuring out the material type, the height, all those intricacies of design. And we might not be able to include it in here, but maybe it's a second study that we do, once we get the bulk of the reorganization done. That's the next project that we can work on, so. I think we want to hear all the ideas, some of them we may not be able to lump in here, but some of them we might, so.
Definitely laying the groundwork, because just the reorganization and how a section of the code might be set up will help lead you to making the process easier, if you decide that's going to be a second step. Because you'll say, "We just need, you know, we just need to add those uses to our use table, and we just need to organize it, you know, with these type of headings," and that will make it hopefully easier as well.
May I ask you an abstract question? Currently, I think most of our zoning gets changed when, when some developer comes in with a text change. We don't actively put anything in as a board, really, I mean, they're, in my experience, we, there are very few things that we voted on, saying, "Let's make this be our, you know, our next zoning rule." My assumption is, I'm asking confirmation, I guess, what you're doing will make it easier for us to go in and say, "This area needs tweaking." So theoretically, we could, two years from now, decide, "This area needs to be rewritten and updated."
Yes, and we're also, I mean, you know, when we start to actually take, go from this outline to actually, you know, the next step of what we're going to be doing, and we've already started doing this, once we get kind of your concurrence, that this looks like a good outline for you, is that we're going to, you know, the more detailed annotated outline, which is the other document.
I've been looking through there, and I do see stuff that's recent.
And, like, in this document, we're really sharing this for you, just for information, so that you know, you can see what we're doing. Because this is obviously a very complex document. But what this document is showing you is just how we're being organized and coordinating technically with the town staff. Is that, you know, what is all the way over here on this far side of the document, which is the far-left side, is the new section numbers. So for instance, you can clearly see that at the very top, it says section one, an introduction, and then that corresponds to section one, that's on this one. But then what we've done is that we've, we've expanded that out a little bit, going all the way down to section one point eight, which is the repeal section. But if you scan over to then the third and fourth columns, those are actually showing you whether that's in your code currently. So for instance, under section one point one, which is authority for a new section, you currently don't have a, a section that corresponds to that. So the word "new" is there, meaning that we're going to be giving you new text for you to consider to put that in there. But for, for instance, section one point three, point one, which is the districts under zoning maps, you currently have a section two point one, which is the division of districts section. So that section is going to be initially moved over to there. And then, when we give that, when we give section one back to you for a draft, what you will see will be text that is not underlined, because it's existing text. Then we won't have text that's underlined, because we're suggesting that you revise this text and add this. And then there will also be struck-out texts, like we, we think that this text should go. So you will be, you know, you will be walking very carefully with us, knowing like what text is being, is existing text, and where it's coming from, and then what we're suggesting would be new text, or additional text, and what we're suggesting to be deleted.
And Jay has been very good over the years of doing that exact thing, when we have to deal with text that needs to be revised, and delete, added, and subtracted, and all of that.
Right, so when...
That should be a familiar format for you. We should, most everybody should be fine dealing with that.
Yeah, I think the only time that it gets a little bit confusing is when it's not underlined, but yet you just don't recognize it, like, but you, you know, we'll, and we'll talk about that again when we go through each section, but just what is not underlined is just text that's coming from somewhere else. It may be a sentence that's in, you know, not even related to that, where we placed it. But, and then on our end, in addition to having this annotated outline, that will basically continue to guide Jay and his staff, and my staff, we will have a master document of all of your existing sections, that we will keep, and where we will go through, and as we move sections, we will strike them out in that document, and we will indicate where we moved to it, where we moved it. And so that way, at the very end of the process, we'll be able to go through that, just on our end. We won't bother you with that, because it'll be a very complex document, but we will be able to make sure that everything got struck out and got moved somewhere. Even if in the new document, we placed it, but then we ultimately crossed it out, or deleted it.
And, and that's a way, just to double-check that a regulation isn't getting lost in the sauce somewhere, you know? Where's the section that regulates chickens? Well, we go back to the master document that Robert signed them out, oh, and actually, here it is, it's saying it was moved to section three from section ten, so it's essentially a tracking and organizing mechanism for us.
This is going to be a searchable document, my, my assumption is.
Sure, yeah.
This is a web-based document that people can go in and Word search.
It might be hard for the, someone who isn't digging in on these things every single day. It's not going to be a super, I say, manageable document for your average person. I think you all would have a step above them, since you sit here and do this quite regularly. But it might be challenging, it's, I think it's more for us to make sure we are not omitting something, moving it to another section, or planning to move it to another section, and then just forget about it. It's really a tracking mechanism for us.
And we will share with you documents to whatever you're comfortable with. You know, whether it's a completely clean document, and we just share you the new, or whether we give you a strike through and underline. But we just want you to know that behind the scenes, we are doing a lot of very careful checking and cross-checking to keep track of stuff.
Honestly, if it's possible, because we found this with Stratford Housing Partnership, that we always took a clean document of how it will look finished, and then a working document that shows both of them. So you can actually, once you sit and look through the deletions and additions, you can actually then go read the final thing and say, "Does this make sense now?"
Right, and we can certainly share that, and we, as we talk through each section in more detail, and then we prepare to bring them to you.
You're going to be doing that on your, on your desktop anyhow, so if, if there's a way that you could give us, if it's possible, I don't, we don't want thousands of pages of stuff, but...
And at the very end of the process, and we talked about this at a previous meeting, you know, like when it, when we go, when we've gone through, and we've worked each of the various sections that we're going to work with you on, and then at the very end, we, we've all, we consolidate all seven sections back together, for something that's going to come before you, for you to adopt as the new zoning regulations. And that particular document will most likely be a clean document, because we talked about this with you, that at that point, when all the sections are together, you will have looked at them individually and know what's, you know, changing, but we'll give you a clean document for that, like, final public hearing and adoption.
That's what I was going to say, we're, we're due for two or four public hearings on this, this coming year? Is that correct? Or have we not said?
Are you talking about public hearings, or are you talking about public out, community outreach?
I'm, I'm putting them together, community outreach.
Yeah, so we're planning on another in, at least one more sometime, maybe, was it late February, early Mar, March?
That's before we've assembled, we're really just putting together what changes we're looking.
Exactly, because we'll want, because at that point, we'll, for instance, we will have taken a much greater look, and we will have talked with you also about either some, something from either, you know, the districts, or the uses, or maybe the site development standards. And we will be kind of clear on, you know, we will have identified what some of the flashpoints might be, we will have talked with you, and we'll say, "You know what? This is a great subject for us to take back to, you know, a community engagement event," which might, I think we've kind of talked, that we might take the form of like focus groups, or something like that, and we'll actually say, "Okay, this is the subject, let's kind of talk this out." And that would come well, that would be waiting for the final...
I'm a monopolizer, monopolizer, yes.
Yes, you are. On this document here, where it says "new," there's not currently an existing document, is that correct?
That's right.
So you're just going to create a new one?
So that's right. So like, for instance, when we share that, like, section one with you, as a Word document, you know, or a PDF of the new, that will, that text, that will be for, for instance, for one, one point one, it'll all be underlined text, because it's all going to be new text.
Okay, so there's nothing, you're creating a new document because we need it?
Right, and we'll share some examples of authority sections with staff, so that we can kind of get the best language that they feel, and then we'll share that with you, and say, "This is what we have suggested, and town staff concurs would be the best language for the authority section."
All right, thank you. And an example of that might be, when we're talking about authority, it might reference the town charter, the town code, giving us the, you all the authority to do certain things, or the state statutes giving the town the authority to take certain activities.
Let me ask a question, this, once we do this, this is Stratford zoning, I know, but what I'm always interested in when I'm speaking to local citizens is, where are we functioning under state law, and where are we functioning under our own zoning? Is there any way that that could be included with just a simple, do you understand what I'm saying?
Simple land use training?
Yes, some...
Are you meaning like wanting to have something in the code that it clarifies that, or?
Something that clarifies to say, "This is not our crazy five-member decision, this is based on the state law."
Well, there is, you know, in...
A lot of the adaption that we're doing in here are to conform with state law.
And I think, I think what the chairman is saying, an, an example might be an eight dash thirty G project, that there is, there are certain things the commission has leverage on, but there's quite a few things that the commission doesn't. And I'm, I'm not sure this is the document to spell that out.
That, that, that's my question, but you can, that's, I can live with that. It's just that, that's where most of our arguments come from.
However, we're hoping that we're, we can make it that, we can answer that for you more easily, because for instance, there's a couple ways. First of all, if an application comes in, the application should clarify that it's coming because of state. But we're going to be adding so, a section in your code, in section one, one point four point five, which is other local, state, and federal requirements. This is a section that we're suggesting that's going to be added, and this is a typical section that most other current modern codes have, and we'll have some examples, that just explains that sometimes there are other regulations that come into play.
So Robert, tell me, read it, read the document, your question is answered.
So you, so you could cite that, you could cite, you know, you can, you'll be able to specifically cite now to those people that ask you that, say, "Why?"
That's critical for us.
You'll be able to say, "I, we're reviewing this because of one point four point five."
That will prevent half the audience from looking at me like I'm the devil.
Right, but then another way that that can be helped, help you, is that in mo, all the districts, and in a lot of the site development standards, we want to make sure that there's a purpose, like the very first thing that you'll come to after you go to that section, there should be a purpose. And if the purpose is because we had to include something, say there's a section that you have to include because state law requires you, that should be in the purpose of that section. It should say, "The state statutes, blah, 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 requires us to include a section on blah, blah, blah." You know, so that way, and in some cases, you have that, because I think in, in some of your more modern sections that you've recently added, I think there's, there is some discussion on that. But we'll want to make sure that anything that is definitely in your code because of a state, or like a, a local, or regional reason, that that's in a, in a purpose statement.
That would help the functioning of what we do, I think, greatly, as much as we can do that. Chris, you had something to say?
Yeah, just regarding the refer-backs to, you know, we'll have the new code, and then we have to somehow preserve the history of what it was in the old code. And the reason that I, I get nervous about that is that occasionally, we've had court cases, town attorney rulings, other types of documents that have been created over the years, that will say, "Okay, this was approved pursuant to section blah, blah, blah." And I know that if we have, you know, this document, this becomes your, your decoder to help that. But what's even more helpful that I've seen, sometimes when you're looking at like some of our state statutes, they have an annotated little history section, like as a footnote under there, that this was formerly known as this, it was moved from this section to this section. I could probably find examples if, if you wanted to. But it, it does help, at least for like the first couple printings of this, when there's going to be people that are used to what was in the old code, or when you're trying to interpret again a former document that makes references to it, you know, you don't have to go start, "Okay, where did this come from, and when this legal ruling that was highlighting this section makes a reference to it, what were they actually talking about?" So if there's any way to preserve that, or keep it so that it's easily traceable, I think that'd be a big, big help.
I mean, yeah, that, there's kind of a mixed bag on that. I think that the, hopefully, the annotated outline, as well as the other technical documents that we'll supply with staff, that at least for the first couple years, they'll be able to use that as references. Actually, putting citations into the new code, like at the bottom, that may be a little challenging, that might be more of a, like, something that you might have to work on with e-code, or something like that. And because your code is the way that it is with thirty-two sections, it's being broken up, it's going to be broken up a lot more than normal, I think, in, in a reorganization. So some of that may be very hard to trace in, in a succinct paragraph at the bottom of a section, you know what I mean? So I don't know, we might have to look at various ways, and then Jay might have to consider that, too.
Maybe we can get the general location, if we can't get chapter and verse, at least get chapter.
So, I mean, it's a really good, it's a really good point, and, and not really a question, but a point, and so, we do this, I do this all the time, when, you know, I'm not handling your over-the-counter permit, I'm usually handling the problem, the issue that staff is having trouble with, and will say, "Well, someone believes they've got a vested right, they got a, they applied for section three point three in nineteen fifty-six, and so they feel like they still are, they, they still have that vested right, that they, it was approved in nineteen fifty-six."
Right.
Well, I have under lock and key, all the old, original zoning...
Well, I have under lock and key, all the old original zoning regulations that I go back to. And so typical planning practice and how you write these approval letters, and it wasn't always done, but they'll say, you know, a veterinary clinic was approved at this location per section 13.1.4.
Mm-hmm.
So what I will then do, once I find that list of how it was approved, I'll then go find the right year, find the section that is no longer in our regulations, but was there in 1956, and we'll have to trace it back. I, I make copies of these old zoning regulations for court all the time. So whether or not there's a better way to do it, my worry with the footnotes is that because we've got so many sections
You'll take up the page.
we might have 100 pages of footnotes. But it's something for us to think about.
Yeah, think about it and whatever the, is the most important way to do it because I could see us getting into, into real trouble. I mean, I don't know if section 20 is going to stay as section 20, Lord knows that's cited all over the place, you know?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, maybe there's, maybe there are some key ones.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's, that's worth
I was going to suggest, like under definitions page, if you could add an additional section definitions that says original location, original section location, and just do like a one pager, just limited to that, saying, you know, anything that was affordable is now found here. Anything that was, just trying to think versus having citations on everyone. You look at state code, you could get lost.
And I think we're going to be taking a swing at a lot of different things for you all to say, eh, or yet we think this is good.
This will be most problematic for our developers and builders who have long-term history in Stratford.
Correct.
If someone comes in from Brooklyn or Queens or, you know, Westchester to come to build, I, I think they'll look at this and say, great, let's, you know, this is what we need to do. It won't be the same kind of question. So it's really a generational thing or a local generational kind of thing that we are going to have to find a way to accommodate. That's going to be you, Jenny.
And I don't think any of these, this is not an unusual circus discussion. I mean, I think any town that goes through a reorganization, you know, and that's why I think in the introduction, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, like the effective date and the severability and things like that. And some of the history, you know, we will work with that kind of get put into that from other examples that we can share. So that's not entirely unusual. And because of the fact that, the good point is, is we're not completely, you know, throwing out the code and writing a whole new code because that's when it's a lot more complicated, obviously. Because of the fact that most everything's going to be migrating, it's just getting people familiar with the new location. And because this new code is going to be only in seven sections and it should be, I'm hopeful that some of those people that have been using the code for a long time, you know, that knew where it was, but it was buried, they're going to say, wow, this is a much easier location. And now I looked at the code and I found right away that, that what I was looking for, even though it's in section five now and not section 20. And we can, you know, some of the, that might be one of the focuses of the focus groups in the early part of the year, is maybe we bring some of those folks together that maybe you identify and maybe we share the new code, the new outline, or the revised code, I should say, and, you know, see, you know, get some of their pointers.
Yeah, and so I've already been teeing up that kind of focus group with local land use attorneys who are very used to certain sections. And so, you know, that's really been the intent all along for me is to let people who work with these codes on a daily basis, let them have a look at it as well. And, you know, they may have a unique perspective that as Mia, myself, as staff, or you all as commissioners, aren't really thinking about. So we're going to try to get as many different point of views on that as possible. And, you know, I'll look into the, maybe the embedding of former sections as we've digitized our zoning regulations with general code. Maybe there's a way to embed former sections or key sections, at least initially, maybe going forward permanently, I don't know. We'll have to see how that works, works out.
Who we not heard from? Deborah? Jim?
My only concern, or, or the question I had was about the language and, you know, who was going to be, I guess, doing the writing? And it sounds like there's, it's just going to be suggestions by your organization, but the zoning commission will have final approval over what goes in there. Is that correct? So you're going to be making suggestions that, that zoning will approve?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to, again, we're a team with Jay and his staff. So anything that we put forward, it's going to be vetted through Jay and his staff. So it'll be kind of a combine and plus, remember, we're going to be moving a lot of your existing sections forward. So it'll be language that you may already be familiar with. But then, that is correct, that after we, you know, vet it between us and then we bring something to you, you all will be making the final decision on the, the code sections and the language, if you're comfortable with what we're presenting to you.
And to answer that question, you know, at a lot of our meetings, we hear, you know, this is a section, we keep getting people coming back asking for relief for a variance for this thing. We've really got to change it. That goes to my staff, Dan, or Susmita, and makes its way to me. And so prior to hiring SLR, prior, prior to drafting our RFP to even look at who we would select, and we had probably a 20-page document of recommendations of things that we knew had to be changed, either as staff, I would say, probably a majority of them actually came in a discussion in, during an administrative session after we voted, are there any member concerns? And then someone will say, you know, this, this isn't working. You know, we, we've got to figure out a way to test, to change this. Well, I took, we took that note and we added it to our running list of things that needed to be fixed. So we're not plucking these things out of thin air. Almost all of them have come either from recommendations from commissioners and then staff and then some residents as well. So I would say that we're not just reading the, what's the newest planning trend and then we're just plugging it in here for Stratford. Linda, you haven't said anything? Would you like to comment? Are you okay? Would you like to make a comment?
No, I think this is very useful. And ultimately, it's your decision, but this is the, you know, this is the conversations that you should be having because this is what brings it up to your mind and you remember incidents or things that happened and, and how it can be better going forward. So I'm good.
So there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to I heard a couple things tonight that probably are worth really, everyone thinking about is how much do you want to see? I mean, we could really give you absolutely everything and we're completely comfortable doing that, working documents, things like, you know, this annotated outline, you know, if you would rather see things that maybe only make it out of the conversation from, from staff and, and Robert, we're happy really to provide you all with anything and everything. And, and we're, we're comfortable doing that, but you may not want that. I, I don't know. So this is really a preference for you all.
I think that we should test ourselves. Don't say we're going to do this with every single thing. Say we're going to do this with things that are critical, that are major updates, and I will say things that we run across all the time, that are our biggest headaches and problems. Do you know what I mean? Those sections where we know what's missing, we know what needs to be changed, where we actually might be able to contribute to what you're doing. So I would say use, you, you're going to have to use your judgment because we're here for an hour a month. You're here every single day. So I think practically it's going to come down to you and your experience. My assumption is you've seen it in a million other towns and know what it takes to put together a good set of zoning that's going to be more functional than what we have. We do the best with what we have, I think, but I'm looking at
The commission is comfortable with that. I mean, we will, we will add, you know, we will continue to just give you more than less. And then if you all determine, hey, let's dial, let's dial it back, you know, we don't need the 100-page document, or whatever it is.
My experience on the housing partnership was that we got all the information all the time
Sure.
and no one read it. So that's a lot of work for it not to be practically used. I'm just saying in practical terms. I'm not making any comments on anybody's skill or commitment. It's that, but there are certain things that we've spent a lot of time.
And I'm sure
We spent a year on signs.
Every town and commission have different expectation of how it's going to go or how they expect it to go. And I'm sure Robert has worked toward towns where they've just said, all right, Robert, here's your money, give us the regs in a year and we'll see you then. Good luck. I, I, I mean, so I think there's a level, different level of participation in every town. So I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of what your expectations are of me. So, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure we meet those expectations and get y'all the right information to make the best decisions for the town.
I came here when there was one person in my zoning administration. So we're, we've done very well the last couple of years and we're moving in the right direction. So whatever we're doing will help us in the future.
Well, I think as we slowly walk through the process, especially with section one being the first one up, which can be kind of like our test through and, you know, we'll, we'll work with Jay and then we'll have him share our draft to you, maybe not have a formal meeting, but maybe share it to you and then see if like what we're sharing with you, you know, you're comfortable with, in the, in the format that you're getting it with the notes and stuff like that. And so from that, we, we can determine how we'll continue to move through the process.
And some of that can be done online. Some of that could just be you, you sending us things, saying that.
Yeah, and we may determine that, hey, look, as opposed to coming out, you may determine that as opposed to coming out here for a review, maybe we review these remotely. I mean, I, I'm perfectly happy coming in, doesn't matter to me, but you may determine that
I know we're going to end up with a whole bunch of new members, but is that something?
There's no decision that needs to be made on that. I'm just really trying to present because it's going to ramp up the volume of work and the volume of documents. It's going to ramp, ramp up significantly going forward. So I think we just kind of adapt and we'd be ready to do what's best for everyone's schedules going forward.
And I think the process will kind of unfold and, and, you know, we'll, we'll come to, into clarity as we go through each section. And I definitely think already we know some of the places where we, we never want to definitely engage with you a little bit more and then some of the sections where I think we can engage with you a little less. So I think it'll, it'll kind of organically
Both of you understand where we need more information and where we're leading blind, basically.
And I'm hopeful that because it's going to be pretty clean and clear, like when we start giving you sections, that you'll start to see and then it'll be like, oh, wow, this makes a lot of sense. It's very clean and concise and we're good with just reading it and getting you verbal
Your notes column on this document really is very helpful. You could go through there and see where things are changing for reasons, where things are not there, where things are
Right.
you know, so it looks good from my, from my point of view.
Well, good. Well, we're very
We have to do two things. Are you enough to be done? You finished?
Uh, yes. I mean, I think we're in a good spot. Thanks for the, you know, ideas and suggestions.
Any idea when we're going to get any kind of first documents?
Well, I would say that probably in the, just as soon as we get into January, we'll probably have time to, I mean, starting, you know, now that we've kind of talked and we've agreed that this is going to be the new outline and, you know, we got some of your feedback, we're immediately going to start to put all these sections together and start to move the existing text around.
And you realize we've had an election, we're going to get new members coming in January.
Yeah.
So they'll have to get a little used to what's happening.
Yes.
With a lot of good leadership remaining, so.
And then we'll, you know, we'll start and then I'll coordinate with Jay in the coming weeks to set up a, like our first kind of review meeting on the first section and then we'll, we'll take it from there. So that you're on board with our process too and then we'll, we'll bring that back to you. But I think we're in, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a final comment? Deborah, can you do me a favor? Can you make a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
And so they are the
Seconded?
Meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting on November 8th, 2023.
Jim?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. I want to make one final comment that Deborah did come. She was not, she was just a little late, but she managed, so she was not absent tonight. My only other question is, Jay, we, we don't have a meeting scheduled for December. Is that true?
Yes, we do.
Is it on Thursday?
Nope, it's on December 13th, should be the second Wednesday.
Okay. I ended up my calendar on the 14th. Okay.
Uh, just let me double check.
So that will officially be our last meeting with our current number of commissions.
Wednesday, December 13th, 6:00 PM.
And seeing no further business, will someone give me a motion to close?
Make a motion to close?
All in favor?